Welcome to Ross Common County Board of Commissioners Work Session, November 9, 2023. First up is Michelle Stevenson, Brownsville Redevelopment Authority vacancy appointment.
Good morning. I'm just presenting the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. They met and had a meeting and Ed Bergeron has resigned his position on that board. And so, excuse me, the VRA is recommending that Ray Losinski be appointed to fulfill the remainder of Ed's term, and that would expire October 31st of 2024.
Ed was on there for a long time.
He was on there. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority was just formed a few years ago.
Oh, okay.
He's been on Economic Development for a long time yet.
Thank you. Any questions for Michelle on there?
Is there a cost associated with that?
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Number two, Heath, Veterans Board vacancy. Come on, turn your mic on, please. Oh, is your mic on, Keith?
Good morning.
Thank you, sir.
I'm here to present that the Veterans Fair's office has filled a vacancy on their Veterans Board with Dan Benson. It's a four-year interim, and he's replacing Larry Foster Jr. And so, part of my obligation is to present, introduce him, and has been a volunteer in our office with only for three years, an active part of the office for six. I'm supporting all our programs, tending every benefits fair, and knows the operation of the office. So I believe on the 22nd, we have him slotted for you guys to make the appointment.
Sounds good. I see you around the office quite a bit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Yep. Thank you for what you do. Number three, Housing Presentation, Jim Perry Ellis, Village of Ross Common. Make sure your mic's on, Jim. It's a green light, please, sir. And state your name and your partner's name. It has to be green.
Morning, Board and Clerk Stevenson.
You want to state your name and your partner's name?
Sure. My name is Jim Perry Ellis, and I am the Director of Economic Development with the Village of Ross Common.
Ron Alden, the Village Manager, Ross Common.
So, thank you for having us. We're here to talk a little bit about the housing crisis that is going on across the state and includes Ross Common County. So, many of you may know I am a retired teacher right here in Ross Common, and after I retired, I started, I wanted to stay retired, but that didn't happen. I started working part-time for the village, writing grants and then doing a little bit of economic development. And that first week I started working at the village, people were walking in and asking, you know, where can we rent houses we would like to buy, but they're really expensive at this point? And so, this was not just a, you know, a once or twice a week sort of thing. This is constantly happening at the village hall right here in town. And so anecdotally, we knew there's a housing issue in the village, in the county, and of course, in the state. And if you've watched local news, nine and 10, you've probably seen a lot of the projects that are going on. Traverse City, Alpena, Gaylord, and so forth. And so, those are some of our bigger towns in northern Michigan. They have full-time economic development departments, and the Montmorences, the Ross Commons, and Ogumaw Counties don't have some of those economic development resources to communicate with the state and access some of that money. So, with that in mind, the first thing that the village had tasked me with was starting a housing task force. This housing task force started off as a village thing, and as the word got out, people around the townships and the county economic development team heard and wanted to offer assistance. And so, our little committee of about five or six builders and municipal people in the village turned into about 10 or 12 county-wide. So we quickly pivoted and became a Ross Common County Housing Task Force. And this was about spring, early summer. At that time, I, the state housing plan rolled out, and within that housing plan, the idea was by 2024, 2025, and in over the next five or six years after that, there would be a lot of money rolling in to provide for housing. And we're talking about a full spectrum of housing. We're talking about senior citizens, talking about the missing middle. They refer to the middle-class housing, and of course, the low-income, single-family residential housing. And so, how the plan is going to roll out is regionally. Ross Common County is in Region E, which would be the middle finger and pointer finger, the northeast region, which includes 11 counties. If we could give you just a quick handout here, there are three handouts you're going to get. The first one is the regional housing plan summary. And the regional housing plan is much larger, but you're getting a summary there. The second handout is some data from a housing study that was done in 2019, and the third handout was, oh, third handout is an example of just the table of contents for a housing needs study that was done in Alpena County. So, this regional housing group, which Ross Common County is a part of, I represent the county in that group, the plan is that there are 11 counties and over 100 townships in this region. And as this MISTHA money, Michigan State Housing Authority money, comes rolling out for development, that's going to happen based on how the region feels we should target different counties. So the region has attempted to get grant money to do a full-blown housing study, a housing needs study, and it would be 11 counties, over 100 townships, and it would include Ross Common County. Currently, there's no funding for that study. It is going to be a quite financially expensive study, and the study itself probably would not occur. Best-case scenario is next spring and into next summer, 2024. At this time, the resources, the other counties have gone and been a little bit more proactive, the developers, the construction companies, electricians, plumbers, so on and so forth, they're going to get gobbled up over the next several years to do their housing projects. And so, a couple of the counties, Alpena, Otsego, and I'm hoping Ross Common, are attempting to do our own housing study so we can get ahead of that curve. Back in 2019, MISTHA approximated that the housing shortage by unit, without regard to what type of units, senior citizen, single-family workforce, they estimated it to be 190,000 units. With, if you look at your second handout, the data handout, just Ross Common County by townships, it's estimated that back in 2019 that we had about a 360-unit shortage. And if you look at some of the townships there, Nestor Township, you might be familiar with, southern end of the county, one of our least populated townships, even they had a 10-unit shortage. And so, imagine 10 single-family houses, like a small subdivision, was the estimated shortage there. And then you see the numbers only get bigger with the other townships. And so, that was the study done pre-COVID, or just on the heels of COVID starting. It's estimated now that that could be up to double, but we just don't know. In order to have a developer, a local developer, let's say that Commissioner Wilson has a piece of property, would like to build maybe two or three duplexes on that property, he can access MISTHA money that would pay for up to half of that development, up to $250,000. So, let's say he wants to build one quadplex, and that quadplex might cost $500,000. MISTHA will give him, with very few strings attached, this housing plan, one of the things they're emphasizing is, in the past, developers, if they access MISTHA money, there'd be a long list of hoops to jump through, and sometimes developers just didn't feel that that was worth it. And so, what's going to happen in 2024 and beyond is developers are going to access this money and be incentivized to build. Right now, there is no incentive. There are no housing and residential building projects outside of the luxury and the waterfront market. There are no residential projects being developed without state MISTHA money or MEDC money. And so, the math just doesn't work. You might put 400, I think they said between $150 and $250 a square foot to build. Do some quick math there, and what used to be a $200,000 build for a 2,000-square-foot house is now a 400 to almost $500,000 build. And so, there's no financial incentive right now for developers without any state aid to build. And so, there are other things that are contributing to this problem. Many of the townships are considering ordinances, and I'm not going to get on the this side or that side, but the long-term versus the short-term rentals, the Airbnbs, and so on and so forth. Many long-term rentals have been converted to short-term rentals, and I'm not saying owners absolutely have the right to use their property how they will, but this is contributing to the issue, among many other things. And so, to access this money, whether you're a municipality trying to, as the villages, develop some land, build some subdivisions, or just a private developer who wants to maybe build a quadplex and put some rentals up, or maybe even live in a single-family house and build a few more, there is, that money will be available. However, anybody that applies for that money will have to provide a housing needs study by an approved consultant by MISTHA that is less than three years old. A housing study from this data is a little bit more than three years old now, so that information can't be used. So, our housing task force took it upon itself to agree to reach out to the county, to the township, 11 townships, the Village of Ross Common, and do our own housing study to get ahead of that. If anybody wants to develop in our county housing, single-family homes, middle-class workforce development is really huge. And if you want to have any kind of economic vitality, I like using the example I heard in a meeting last week. The CEO of the hospital, Alpena, has 109 openings, nurses, doctors, technicians, broad spectrum. And every time he offers a job, he's worried because probably 70% to 80% of the time, they're going to come look for a house in Alpena or a place to rent, and they won't be able to find anything. So, that growth at the hospital is being stymied by the fact that they just don't have enough housing. Otsego, Gaylord, just recently are starting to get ahead of things, get rebuilt from the tornado, and they're starting to get to the point where they're becoming attractive. Menards, I don't know if you've heard of it, Menards is going to open in Gaylord, so, shortly, soon. And so, with that in mind, the Ross Common County Task Force needs to raise $9,000 amongst the townships, the county, so on and so forth. I have been going to township meetings and been stumping for each of the townships to participate in this study, and I've been asking them for $1,000. I didn't necessarily expect Allsable Township and Nestor Township and some of the smaller populated townships to necessarily participate. But, you know, we have commitments from three or four of them at this point, and I'm still on the agenda for Ross Common Township, Markey Township, some big ones here, Lake Township initially, and Garesh Township coming up soon. So, with that in mind, we've raised about $5,000 so far out of the 9,000. The Ross Common County Economic Development Corporation, we met with them last week. Commissioner Milburn sits on that board, and they voted to support us financially as well. And Commissioner, I just want to pass on that Commissioner Milburn, Milburn did support that vote at the EDC level. And so, what we're asking is that the commissioners, I know it's the end of the year, budgets are being wrapped up, budgets are being developed, and so on and so forth. It's probably not the best time, but we're asking that the county kick in $1,000 toward this study. The study will be provided to everybody in the county. There is no tit-for-tat. I'm not saying that, you know, if you don't pitch in $1,000 that you won't see the study. You will see the study, and it's just a matter of, we would hope that you would also participate in getting this housing study done. And it should be done. The gentleman, the study is out of St. John's, Michigan. He did the study for Gaylord. He did it for Mackin Island and a couple other communities up north. And so, we will need this study done to attract developers and to apply for some of this housing money. And developers themselves would not want to add that cost if they don't have access to a countywide housing study. What questions do you have?
I have some questions.
Go ahead, Derek.
How does this going to impact our budget? That was my first question. I think you kind of answered that. You want $1,000, okay? And the second question I have is, how would we help the local developer in promoting this program? In other words, one of the further questions I have, we really don't, if we're going to move forward with this program, we don't want a bunch of outside developers coming in where we could be having our local developers take care of it, building the economy for the local economy rather than make other developers from other counties rich.
I understand your question, and I always like to support local as well. We're in a unique situation where it's a private sector decision. If Commissioner Wilson or you have wanted to develop property, you can access this money. He would help you, you know, there would, the housing task force would help you with regards to accessing some of that state money towards your development, but it would be a private project. This is, let me make this clear. This is not the state coming down and saying, Ross Common, you have 360 units that you're down. We want you to do this, and we want you to do that. They're basically saying, well, here's the framework. You should develop. You've got an issue here, obviously, and talk to developers, talk to people, talk to construction folks. So, if you decide, Commissioner, that you want to develop some property, then you would contact me. We can get you going, accessing some of that money, and it would be your choice on whether you would hire a local company to construct and do all the electrical and so on and so forth, or somebody outside. And my fear is that in late 2024 and 2025, a lot of these folks, and you know, you've seen the wait times with the people that are in the trades, you know, you can wait several months to get a project off the ground. And so, there is no mechanism to ensure local business, you know, local, I can't tell you who to hire.
Well, the reason I ask that is, I've dealt with the government before. I have my own business, and there's a lot of bureaucracy involved, and our local contractors aren't familiar with going through that type of bureaucracy, where outside contractors have been going through that for ages, and they know the system. They can work the system. And they're going to come in here, and they're going to get the money, okay? And they're going to build the projects, and our local guys aren't going to get it. What type of a program, or what could you say that would help us have our local developers get a step up instead of being a step behind these outside contractors?
That's, I'm not avoiding your question. There is no mechanism for our task force to legally put a rule on this. Now, MISTHA will have rules, things that include, for example, who you choose, contractor, plumbers, whatever. Those sorts of limitations will not necessarily be, I mean, they'll have to, and you may roll your eyes and so forth. There may be some stipulations in there with regards to living wages and so on and so forth. There may be some hoops to jump through.
Can we establish rules that they have to hire local?
Yeah, I don't think you can when it's government money.
Well, I know I currently have a million-dollar project going on on the north end of town here, and working with MEDC through this project, they encouraged me to get in touch with local contractors. So, I contacted like eight different local contractors that...
That's what I want to hear. That's what I want to hear.
And then what happened is, once they submit all the credentials, and they check everything, make sure they're bonded and insured, and all this sort of stuff, then going through that, they came back to me after we had the bid proposal and said, is there a company or any of these that you feel more comfortable working with? So, there was that discussion and comfort. I think the state is now realizing that these contractors are booked, and they're booked for, you know, a year or two, and most of them are goblin up these large projects, where the little projects that we may have in the village, and so adding a couple homes or duplex or something like that, you know, they need the local contractors to take on those projects because the larger contractors are building these multimillion-dollar structures, you know, and making their money there. They're not going to make much money on this, but locally, they want their footprint in the sand, and they want to be a part of that community. And so, I think, you know, what I have found is that local contractors generally come in with a lower bid. They generally have the history and the commitment to the area that they want to walk the streets and say, yeah, I was a part of that, you know? And so, I think if anything, that the local contractors probably have a little more of an advantage in this day and age than what a group coming in from the outside does.
How laborious, or I don't know if that's the right word, is it for our local contractors to deal with the bureaucracy with MISTHA and some of the other organizations that are out there? Because I know it ain't easy. And you're going to, a lot of guys are going to look at and say, I don't know, I haven't anything to do with it. I know I wouldn't.
And things have changed a little bit, and I'm not going to say that that process is not still somewhat tedious, but that was something that they were apparently cognizant of. They keep talking about in these meetings, I'm going to, how the string, the strings that are attached and the hoops to jump through are much less with this state housing plan. Developers are going to have to apply. They're going to have to jump through a few of these hoops, but not near as many as they had in the past. I hope that we don't get bogged down in the idea that, you know, it's state money, and, you know, it's for housing and those sorts of things. There is a need for housing. If anybody wants to develop in this county, they would have to either purchase their own housing study to access this money, or they would have to ask a municipality if a housing study has been done, and then we give them a housing study. And this is part of the application process for that money. No building is going to happen. I would love a private sector free-market solution to this housing crisis. I absolutely would. But right now, the math isn't working. There is no incentive to build something because even with the high rents, they're not enough. My son, Grand Valley graduate, Ross Common High School graduate, moved to Grand Rapids, wanted to come back, couldn't necessarily want to live with mom and dad, and started looking for housing. And the best he could find is up in Grayling, and he was on a waiting list. And so, everybody's got waiting lists. We're trying to be proactive as a county and get this housing study done and taken care of so that if we have any developers that are ready to go now, we can get ahead of that. I appreciate your concerns. One of the things that downstate, we have a developer who serves on our task force, and he, I know he's downstate, but he's trying to give us the perspective of what's going on down in the Grand Rapids area, and what little communities like ours, and I think he referenced the little town of Lakeview, north of Grand Rapids, they held a very similar in size to Ross Common, and they held the developers' days. And what they did was they brought in the local developers and taught them how to access some of this money, how to work with the community and with their housing study, and to get some projects off the ground. And so, we anticipate with a housing study in hand that we will also try to host a developer days for our local developers. Thank you.
Thank you.
If Darlene isn't going to ask the question, I'm going to ask the question because we've been working on the budgets, and I know $1,000 doesn't sound like a lot, but right now, we're getting into whack and a whole bunch of stuff.
I get that.
And are there grants available to pay for this instead of having the county pay for it? Even though it's only $1,000, which doesn't sound like very much.
That was the very first thing we did, but the grant process, as you know, is pretty slow. And the soonest that we could get anything that we could even apply for toward this study would be December. And then, at that point, it would be several months before we could even look at approval. We're looking to do this on our own without any grant strings attached from...
Well, this is kind of like an emergency appeal that you're making, basically.
Well, yeah. I wouldn't call it, yeah, if you want to hear the word emergency appeal, I'll give you that word.
I'm going to beat the rush.
Rex, dear, Darlene, thank you for your presentation. Thank you very much. Number four, General Fund Millage, Darlene and Rex.
I guess I can go first. At this point, we don't feel it's appropriate to go for a millage. It's too late in the year to put something together and educate the public, get any success on it. We should have started this probably in January, but at this late game, we're not recommending we do anything.
Rex, why is that? Why didn't we get going on this earlier?
I don't know. I'm not in charge.
Who's in charge?
Well, I brought it to the board in January.
I think come the beginning of the year, we're going to have to determine, once our budget is finalized and passed, what we're going to do as far as what millages will be on the next ballot. And then, we're going to have to hit the ground running, trying to get those passed and educating the public, and having projects in mind for what that money will be used for and what it will go to. Otherwise, I don't think we'll get anything passed, just from what I hear, you know, from my different constituents and people that I've talked to.
Sounds kind of sad.
It is sad.
It's like the last one we went for. You know, we had different meetings in different townships, and the participation was not there, to even come and listen to us.
And after being part... I remember we had talked about this before. Were we going to talk about having a, you know, a meeting for, you know, all of the townships and everybody in Ross Common rather than go to individual townships? I know we had talked about that. What happened with that?
We just never came up with what we were actually going for to put a meeting together.
After being part of that process the last time, you know, I realized that you just can't start this two or three months before an election. It has to start many months ahead of time.
So, we're November now. When can we, when can we, I know you said the first of the year.
Hopefully, hopefully next November.
Can we get it going now?
Well, like Darlene mentioned, right after the first of the year, we should start working.
Because then the budget's going to be finalized. We're going to know areas that we, you know, we can hit the ground and know what departments, what we actually need where we can write a focus on.
Thank you.
Okay, number five, operational approvals to Higgins Lake LLC. Is that you, Rex?
You want to start it off, Darlene?
Um, sure. So, after our last meeting, we sent a letter to the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy, and we also sent a letter to the Higgins Lake Property Owners Association, asking if they would be interested in funding that survey that we talked about. I did get a res-... Um, I did get a response um from the Higgins Lake Land Conservancy, Bob Fry. Um, they were actually going to be meeting on the Monday after they had received the letter. And they um, he wrote a letter back to us um. And they did decide to fund the survey directly. Um, once the survey in that, what I believe it got started yesterday, wasn't it?
Yes, they're going to finish up today.
And once that is complete, they will get us a copy of that survey. And then based on what the survey states, then we would be able to start applying for the permit and dependent on what that shows depends on what obviously we're asking for in the permit process. Um, I would personally like to thank them um and the rest of their board for, you know, paying for that survey directly.
And what was the cost of that survey?
Um, I don't know the exact cost.
Close to fifty-eight hundred.
Yeah.
I I think once the survey's done, I would like to see an official letter of appreciation.
Oh, sure.
The land conservatory and also Chase Sepke, he's been working on that with them at no cost to anybody. Um, and I think we need to make sure a letter of appreciation is issued by the board.
And no doubt.
Also.
I need to understand this, okay? The last meeting, we decided to send a letter out. Not only was the letter sent out, it was accepted, and the survey is done before this meeting. That that, I mean, that's like lightning speed around here usually.
No doubt.
To have anything done. I I mean, I'm I'm flabbergasted.
That was the point of it, before winter hits. Um, also along them lanes, once the survey's done, it needs to be figured out what the deficiencies are and a permit applied for, and that's going to take somebody with the expertise of A. Sepke. I would like to ask permission for us to ask for donations to put him on as a DA for Higgins Lake structure, at least through the permit process.
DA, you mean delegated authority?
Correct.
Okay, we don't have a delegated authority right now, do we?
Correct.
So we need to get somebody on there pretty quick.
Well, it would, yeah, at least through the permit process.
Right.
And I'd like permission from the board to send letters out for donations for that again.
Is uh is that something that we need to vote on in the main meeting?
Yes.
That works. So can we head in this this meeting coming, we have to wait two weeks? We can't make a motion today. We make a motion today, Mr. Chair.
It's in our rules, something like that.
A motion can be brought at any time, Mr. Chair.
Oh, if we discuss it in a work session, we have to wait two weeks to bring it up for a vote, in case the public wants to come to us.
I I I've asked this, where, Michelle, our our parliamentarian, does this say that in the rules? That a motion cannot be brought? We have to wait two weeks? We have to talk about something, then wait? That 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 seems to be the reason we've seem to be going crawling.
My understanding of the rules is anybody can bring a motion forward at any time.
That's what I understand, Mr. Chair.
I'm gonna have to check into it. It's always been the policy that if something's brought up, we vote on it in two weeks. We can't bring it.
Where's that policy, Mr. Chair?
I'll have to find it.
We'll find out between the breaks so we can.
I'll look for it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, you're you're the parliamentarian, you know? The answer, because he's going to go to you and ask.
Well, not the parliamentarian, but according to this whole process, well, uh motions can be brought up at the at the next meeting. It's the vote, the decision.
And this doesn't involve money from us.
Right.
This is just giving permission for Darlene and I.
Past, we've always discussed and then wait two weeks before it can be brought up.
Why nothing ever gets done around here, Mr. Chair?
All things get done.
We still space. Michelle?
Generally, the practice has been, yes, you presented at the work session, then you vote two weeks later. However, I know in the past that this board has. If there's things of time sensitivity.
Yeah, time sensitive.
Moved on things at the meeting on that current day.
Thank you.
This is a pretty time sensitive issue, I think. So I think uh I'm I'm gonna make that motion.
We're gonna take care of it next meeting.
Perfect. In this, at ten o'clock.
Sure.
Our next meeting.
That's my contention, but.
That's my contention.
I think that's just what the chairman said.
Okay. In two weeks.
I just told them to get it written.
Okay, perfect. Perfect, thank you.
Number six.
Darlene and I would like permission to contact the attorney and spicers and to see what's holding up the apportionments on Horton Lake.
Oh, yeah, I thought that was already being done.
Well, I wasn't given permission by the chair or the board.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
CTE millage proposal, Sean, how you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you.
Real good. Make sure your mic's on and state your name.
John Petrie, uh Core Intermediate School District Superintendent in regards to the CTE millage proposal on the ballot for the presidential primary in two thousand twenty-four. To start that, we won't know until November ninth, as probably the commissioners know as well, when the presidential primary will land. Will it be February or will it be March? Irregardless, we have filed a one mil proposal for career tech ed. Background knowledge to it. I don't know if many have seen it, and that's part of what we want to make sure public publicize as we've completed. Probably two years ago, that all the superintendents from the ISD lobbied the state of Michigan, recognizing that Core ISD has always had career tech ed. But we've been spread out. We've had programs in Horton Lake welding, we had our automotive programs here at Ross Common in the small space. We originally, when the campus at Curtland closed, that's where a lot of our programming was. We weren't able to move, but I'm not a believer to shutting down CTE because it was just mentioned, the need for skilled trades. So we worked together, superintendents throughout the four counties to look at what's the what's the task. We also looked at, we all know to build a building currently, very costly. So what we did was look at what buildings we had potential, and at this point, many already know that Ross Common Middle School had a wing that was available for us to use for our program. So we entered into a contract to try it out. We then lobbied the state to say we don't have lab spaces. We don't have an auto lab. We don't have a welding lab. We were awarded, the only ISD awarded two point five million dollars to construct labs attached to the middle school. So those were built. They are currently finished. Good news is, we went from an enrollment in career tech ed from forty-seven students five years ago, four countywide, to two hundred and twenty now. The beauty, folks, is this, we also, as an ISD, I didn't want kids driving down the roads. I had a son who did that every day for twenty-six hundred square miles. So they drove every day themselves. For ISD, set aside money to make sure we're paying for the transportation of the students. So we pay for busing for the kids to come from their schools to location. The middle school is centrally located. Now, I want to be very clear. I'm proud of what our instructors have done. I'm proud of what's out there now. We have an early middle college model, which means kids can complete their associates for free. We have connections with Curtland, and Curtland does a wonderful job through the early middle college to finish the students when they leave our programs. Again, that becomes a free tuition to the students all the way through. We also, all of our students get direct college credit for the CT programming, that they can transfer to any university or community college. That's another great factor we have and what we currently have. I want to be clear of what we currently have. So with that, currently, our welding program, our public safety program, and our automotive program have an early middle college model where students can get up to anywhere between forty to sixty-four credits paid for, full associates. The rest of them aren't there, they get credit in every course currently. So that's a standing system that we've built over the last few years, continuing to stand well for our students. But we need to increase our trades. So right now, like everybody else, we're at the point where we looked at, we know that at some point budgets will slide from the state or something to effect. We maintain and look at what we have to provide in the current status. But I'd like to be able to take two hundred and get it to four hundred. It's currently only offer AM programming because of staffing and et cetera, looking at that, because our staff, most, many of our staff are working other jobs, but they take their profession, and they come in and they teach our kids, and I'm very, very proud of what they do. Coming to the millage and what we're going, we're asking for the proposal of one mil, I did take the last four years' average of all the tax base, because obviously last year we've seen a large increase, and before that we've seen three and two. So I averaged up four-year basis of what we received for our general ed and our special ed. Which general ed, we only get point three right now, and special ed to get point seven five, and we've gotten hit a little bit heavily, so we're a little bit below that. But I took the averages so I could see what we proposed. On the handout that's in front of you, a great things to look at, and a lot about what the cost, this, all of this is on our website. So did it come down to everybody? Did you get a copy of this? This I almost got to you. So all of this information is the first thing that pops up if you go to coreISD.net. You want a website, information will pop right up about the millage. We're just in the infancy of getting it out there because I want to make sure all the points were completed. Programs are operational, and I'm proud to say going very well. But we need in this county, in these four counties, to have more students. So programs we currently have that we offer right now, we have construction, but that's up at Crawford. The students do transport and get to Crawford. We didn't want, we didn't have the space to move it down right now. But that's one of our last outward runs, but all students can go there and learn construction. We have a full auto lab. We have a full welding lab. We have a public safety uh program. We have a teacher academy. We have an IT marketing. We also have a med occupations. All those programs and a full cosmetology too, that has connections with Curtland for students to finish their full licensure as well. A lot of good things going on, but when I look at that, if we're going to continue to supply what our students need for the future, I felt like it was time, and and you always wonder, when is the time right? But everybody I talk to, no matter who, will tell you, just like was said, we need trades, we need also, the other part, look at it, is how can we keep our students to be able to stay in the area? Build their lives here, to constructively work here, whatever it may be. So I don't want to read through the whole pamphlet. I have a free information for the public. It is on our website. Please go take a look. I'm also going to leave my card with the commissioners. What I'd like to invite the commissioners to do is get ahold of me. I would like to, at some point, invite you to do a walkthrough of the current facility. So you can really get a feel for what our students are getting and what our plans are looking in the future. But the biggest thing is now, the nice thing is what was built. But on the money from the state giving to Core to build that, we didn't build a facility. We're not asking to build a facility. We're asking to grow our opportunities, grow our programs, grow our enrollment, and what we have to at this point. I'll pause for a moment, but I'll just add this additional piece. As far as funding that we get from this, we do get federal funding for career tech ed through Carl Perkins Fund, but it's only in the amount of about a hundred and twenty thousand annually. We do get added costs, which is for each program, the higher it's rated for a need in the state, the more the state will pay for it. That comes in at a really insignificant amount as well, but I do want the board to also know that we have to, we have to charge tuition to our districts. So we're clear, we pay, we charge two thousand annually per student, which means you get about a four thousand dollars. So we're running a pretty minimal budget. We get a four hundred thousand dollar each, based on we have now money from the school districts, but we physically pay for the transportation as an ISD, like I had said before. For the four hundred thousand dollars, millage passes, that tuition rate no longer gets charged to the schools. We also have schools that have approved programs right now that Core is fully money to. West Branch, Charlton, Heston, and Crawford Asable have programs that are approved vocational programs. They get equipment money every year from the ISD. If we pass the millage, that goes away from the state, but part of building that is I want to continue to give to them as well, because they're training students in the trades as well. If you look at, we're not looking to take anything away. We want to make sure we maintain and grow as they ask. So I'll pause right there for any questions you might have, please. If I don't have them, I'm going to make sure I get them for you.
I I assume you go first. So if anybody else wants to go first.
That's okay.
Okay.
Please.
So what you're asking for in an increased millage, is that a separate line, a separate line item entirely on our?
It would not come to the county. This, we as the ISD can levy a millage, so it would be strictly Core ISD asking amongst all of the four counties. Vote based for the yes or no on the millage has to be aggregate pass, meaning if one county passes and it doesn't get levied, it actually comes up as count for all four counties, rather than not that millage would pass. So it's separate.
It seems to me that the money you're asking for is to in my business background anyway, the more use you can make of your infrastructure, in other words, your building, sounds like you're running one shift right now.
We are.
And for example, McDonald's only used to be hamburgers in the afternoon or in the evening. Now it's breakfast, lunch. They run it almost twenty-four, seven.
Right.
It seems to me that that would, that makes a lot of sense to to be able to open that up for increased shifts. Is that what?
And there's two points to it, and you'd be bringing great point. Point number one is you'd have to hire full staff to be full-time educators in the, instead of part-time, basically, like I had mentioned before. The other piece is.
That would be more cost-effective, wouldn't it?
By far.
More cost-effective.
The other piece is, if you can double the enrollment of students, here's the other thing you run into. Each district has their own schedules. So a student might have AP courses in the AM, so they can't take career tech ed, but they could in the PM, but we don't offer it. So that gives that availability to grow the capacity. When I looked at the finite, the the actual number, size-wise of kids that could there, between three fifty, four hundred, we're going to max our space out. Right now, with two hundred and twenty students, we're running about twenty-two percent of the juniors and seniors. Now, these are only offered to juniors and seniors. That's about, we're right now about twenty-two percent. We were at, like I said, way less, maybe one, two percent. So we've seen an increase. The schools are supporting, the things are going on with the kids, getting degrees that they can use. So yes, it does maximize. The other piece is, I didn't want to buy land, build a, build a center, the cost of building the center, you couldn't afford that no matter how you did it. So using a space that we currently have that was applicable in Ross Common Schools has been fantastic for that. We use that space, and if we have to expand, there's points that we can expand. But I'm a believer in the business model that says you build what you can, what you can maintain, you make a plan to expand and then advertise that plan. And really, this will increase the ability for our kids.
What what's your ask of us? Uh, what can we do?
What I'm going to do is I'm, we're going to ask, I'm always looking for stakeholders to be able to support by telling others what's good about it. I can't say vote yes or no, that we know how the legal parts go, but I want to educate, and I'm going to all the counties, and I've done this in the past, educate the commissioners and then invite you to come see, and then we also have a committee, a CTE committee, of people who would be interested in helping to advertise it. Maybe knocking doors, or maybe just telling your friends, but really getting the point that if we're going to be the hub to build for our kids, and I, we need to do this.
It seems to me that building trades and everything else is is a lot more critical than some of this other silly nonsense they teach in our schools today.
I have seen great success in it, yes.
Yeah, and and it seemed to me we'd get a lot more people involved in the trades if we had that. I know I went through building trades back when I was in high school, and it was one of the best programs I ever did. I got a job right out of, right, actually co-op when I was in high school and in uh helped work my way through college, you know, in the building trade. So I know that the trades are really, really important for people, is at least is, it's not a total career for their whole lifetime. So if there's anything, I mean, I don't.
The first start point is, right now, I'm not a heavy social media person, but we have full Facebook for Core, where we're advertising what's going on at the CT centers. So I welcome people to go onto our Facebook and link to it, please, and share. The other part is, we're we're beginning to point where my director, Natalie Davis, is gathering stakeholders to help share the word in the communities. Because it's it's, you got to have a reason for people to vote one mil, and you want to really share with them what it's going to do for our kids. My background, I was a certified ASE technician, certified welder, taught machine and welding for fifteen years, was a career tech head director of a center, seeing the success for eight years before I came to Core as superintendent. So I've had a trades background to see what it's done successfully. I have a, currently have a son in the welding program, and I had a son who took the public safety program. I very much believe in these opportunities, or I wouldn't be setting out with this. So, yes, if people are interested, I'm going to hand up my card. Please contact me. I'll make connections. What I'm asking for is just people to share with others the importance of what this would do for our students in the four counties. Core actually is the second largest ISD geographically in the state, so we actually go into nine counties. It's quite large, affects a lot of students, getting business owners, getting tradespeople involved with us. We have advisory committees. I always would love to have people on our advisory committees to come advise those programs twice a year. As a yes, that's good equipment, or no, we that, we need to go this route. So those are two of the asks that we're looking for. Sharing the knowledge, if you want to be involved in helping to spread the word. I'm going to leave my card with everyone. Please reach out to me. I'll make the connection for you. And I would like to offer a tour of the center if the commissioners would like to come out at some point. Contact me. I'd be honored to take you through to uh show what we've done. Right now, I have AM sessions. If you want to come in with the students there, great. If you want to come in in the afternoon when uh we have it more open to walkthrough, great. It doesn't matter. We'd love to have either way.
I'd like to ask the rest of the commission, is there something that we could do, like pass a resolution in support of this program, so people, so our voters can see that this is something that would be important for our community?
We can.
That would be fantastic.
Rex, what do you think?
I don't think we should be passing a resolution supporting a millage of any kind. Not that I'm against this program by any means, because when I was on school board, I worked for, we had the school to work program. And I was part of that in Hilton Lake Schools. You know, it's important that we have trades people coming up.
The biggest thing is getting the word out.
And be supporting millages by a resolution.
The biggest thing is getting the word out. Really isn't like it said before, it's a time sensitive because it's either that or wait two more years and I look at the need now for the kids. When I looked at that, so what I would like to do, anything that the board would like from us, I'd be more than willing to assess with, but I would like to ask if I may. And my colleagues, you have to call me individually with anything, please come out and take a tour. It took a while to get it built. But if you drive up to the Ross Common Middle School right now and you look on the side, it's closest to all elementary, you'll see a nice construction that was put in place. And then the adjacent hallway and the hallway next to that, behind that is all what we would call the center. One of the beautiful things is our students actually named it last year. We didn't want to name it. We wanted them to name it. They actually named it the Core Advanced Technical Innovation Center. Named by the students who were there. So you can call it CADDIC. And so it's just really neat that the kids are taking ownership. But if you walk through there, you'll see it's incredible how we've now, I'm almost to the point of waiting lists for some programming and by opening a PM program, that can go away. But as it will continue to grow, we'll see the necessity of it. I'll pause there for any other questions. I don't want to take, I can talk all day about school and kids.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I just hand you the card?
Thanks.
Thank you all very much.
Yep.
Please reach out. Love talking to you.
With that being said, Rex has a motion he has to get tight. Let's say ten, ten, we'll meet again. Eight, two thousand and twenty-three, it's ten AM or ten fifteen, something like that. Let's stand for the pledge, please.
Yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You'd like to go back to school? Michelle Roca, board members, please.
Spencer.
Here.
Hillburn. Wolfson. Ostergren.
Here.
Russo.
Here.
Number four, approval of the agenda. I would like to first add the authorize Ross Common County Commissioners to move forward with Chase. Number seventeen, that would be number seventeen. And then numbers. Motion's three through fifteen. I'd like to take off the table today. I'd like to have a special meeting next Wednesday at ten AM. When Jody's available, there's a few commissioners with questions where we can move forward with this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Number three, um, we can't deal with today?
I would like to just do all these, anything with monies. I need a motion to that effect.
So no.
Second.
And the special meeting would be ten AM next Wednesday.
Excuse me, what's that date?
Next Wednesday.
Fifteenth.
I'll be here.
Okay.
That's great. Since it's an official Michigan holiday, Mr. Russo, you know that.
You'll be out of the woods by then. Michelle, can you call roll, please?
Uh, Ostergren.
That's a yes, I believe, correct, for this special meeting?
Yeah.
Approve the agenda? Okay, I vote yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes.
Just clarify, this is to approve the agenda, correct?
To approve the agenda with the addition of motion number seventeen and then table any motions three through fifteen until the special meeting after number fifteen.
No.
Thank you.
Can I change, can I change my vote? Well, you voted no.
I clarified what it was for.
It's a terrible day to have that meeting on.
Okay, number four, approval of the agenda. I mean, excuse me, I didn't mark it off. Prove all the minutes for ten twenty-five, twenty-three regular meeting, ten twenty-five, twenty-three budget. We didn't have the budget of finance. Do we afterwards? Okay. Uh, budget and finance meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second.
Clerk call roll, please.
Russo.
Yes.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Claims and accounts, number six.
Move to approve Class A bills in the amount of four hundred forty thousand, five hundred eight dollars and sixty-six cents.
So move.
Question?
We have to have a second before discussion.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Question? Um, am I reading that correctly? Item two, four, four, economic development, fifty dollars. I thought economic development was cut from the program last year.
Yes, Julie.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Clerk call roll.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Move to approve claims and accounts in the amount of one hundred eight thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents.
So move.
I'll second.
Discussion. Clerk call roll, please.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Wolfson. Spencer.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes. Okay, number seven, uh, we don't actually need that since I cut all them items, correct clerk? Do next week.
Uh, we have it posted for public hearing for today.
Okay.
You need to have your public hearing today.
Pardon me?
No, I, didn't I give you the, I gave you-
Public hearing.
Agenda.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Number seven, it's number seven. Okay, public. Public hearing for twenty twenty-four budget, Noel.
Need a motion.
Or? Yeah. You know, I'll make a motion to go into public hearing.
I'll second.
Discussion.
What date is that for?
Now. Michelle call roll, please.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Ostergren.
No.
Spencer.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes. Aiden, Noel. What do we have to do here, Michelle? Since we're not approving nothing for another week.
We all should have voted no.
Can't tell you how to vote. We have a public hearing posted for today because we had to have it posted so many days before the meeting. So, all you proceed from here, usually what would happen is we'd go into public hearing. Our administrator controller would present the information. I don't know if, if HR specialist Martin is prepared to do that or if we're, what you, how you want to proceed.
What I'm going to do is uh, I'm going to make a motion then to close the public hearing and then we'll open it back up prior to our special board meeting. And we're going to have to repost it for next Wednesday.
It would have to be after, wouldn't it, Mr. Chair?
What's that?
Public hearing would have to be after we go over the numbers next week?
No, because right here we're going in the public hearing for twenty twenty-four budget and we're not approving it to after the public hearing. So we're going to have to do the same thing for next Wednesday.
Not to confuse the issue, Mr. Chairman, but does it now mean with the voting that we go into public hearing today and we do not have one November fifteenth?
We have to on November fifteenth prior to the meeting.
I'm going to have to get clarification on that because this is something, this isn't my, this isn't my wheelhouse.
We need to have a public meeting so many days um before
budgets.
We have the, before the approval of the budget, that I'm not aware of, but I'm just aware that there has to be the public hearing before there is approval of the budget. So like I said, that I'm not aware of the exact amount of days or the timeline of that. Just aware that there has to be a public meeting, the public, their input. That being said, I believe that since you are in a public hearing at this point, you do have to allow the public to give comment at this time. Before you're able to close.
And don't we have to, I understand, from what I understand, we haven't approved the final numbers or come up with the final numbers for our budget, correct? And so, so then we need-
So get, welcome to the world of special meetings for the next month or so while we're going through the budget process.
There is a proposed, the twenty twenty-four proposed budget is, has been on the website. That is also what was presented to you at the committee of the whole meeting two weeks ago, I think if I'm remembering things correct. That is still what has been, that has been presented. There have been a couple variations that just need to be corrected, but nothing that changes major things overall that need to be fixed. That will, things that need to be fixed will be fixed, but there's nothing right now that's drastically changing the budget. You know. Easily. So that proposed budget that is on the website can still be talked to.
But I'm all, I'm all in favor of having public comment, no, no doubt about that. But there are, I, I believe there are going to be some changes coming up.
There may be some major changes coming up.
And so, yeah, and like I said, that like, of the timeline as far as the budget, you know, there are changes to the budget. I'm not aware of the timeline of that.
So we can have public comment now, that's, that's- Based on the current budget.
Thank you. Is there any public out there? With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to go out of public hearing back into regular session. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Discussion. Clerk call roll, please.
Ostergren.
Yes.
Wolfson.
Yes.
Russo.
Yes.
Spencer.
Yes.
Okay. Public comment.
Again, my name is Frank Peszek. I'm a lifelong resident of Hilton Lake, the Ross Common Township. And I'll just start by recognizing Veterans Week. As a veteran of the armed forces, it's always a a time of remembrance. And while I remember veterans, I'll remember Parker Seiler. I'm here today to introduce to you Callie Barr. Who's Callie Barr? She is a candidate for the US House First Congressional District. That means Washington, but the Callie will describe a little more what the first congressional district is, but I wanted to bring her in today and get her chance to meet some of the voters here in Ross Common County. Callie?
Thank you so much and thanks for recognition of Veterans Day. The first district, they get to be very Michigander as I describe it, is the whole upper peninsula and then the top third of the mitten. I grew up in Traverse City and Sheboygan, met my husband at Sheboygan High. September eleventh, he wanted to fight for his country. That would change the course of our lives. We got married very young. Eighteen and nineteen and the Marine Corps took us all over. I got my teaching degree from Central Michigan during that time. My husband came back from Iraq and Afghanistan with post-traumatic stress and a traumatic brain injury. And I got very involved in advocating for military families and in Washington DC. Felt like there wasn't really a voice for the enlisted class, for working class families, and that inspired me to get my law degree. I had two girls, five and two, so I kept fruit snacks and goldfish in business for three years. Graduated with my law degree, worked as a litigation attorney for several years and worked to build a platform to give veterans free legal services. And during that time, we've had this increasing polarization in our politics. And for my husband and I, that was deeply concerning. We believed very much in protecting our democracy above all else and seeing each other as neighbors and as Americans first. And so I'm running not just to show up for our families, but to protect our democracy, to be a voice for our working class. Right now we're at the greatest period of income inequality since the nineteen twenties. And, you know, we need to make sure we have healthcare accessibility and affordability and protect social security and Medicare for our seniors and I've got two little girls, so it's very important that we have a future for our kids. You know, support our public education, childcare, clean air, clean water. So thanks so much for having me today and, you know, in recognition of Veterans Day coming up, I echo your statements and feel like there's no greater way to honor our veterans than, you know, carrying on with our democracy. So again, it's Callie, C-A-L-L-I-E-B-A-R-R. I have a website. Check it out. If you have questions, let me know. Happy to meet and talk with anyone. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks Frank. Is there any other public comment? Yes, Michelle.
Well, for those of you that aren't aware, we did have an election yesterday, so I was just going to let you know. So the Hilton Lake, the only thing on the ballot was for Hilton Lake Community Schools for an operating millage renewal. And unofficial results that did pass with two thousand sixty-four yes votes and eight hundred and twelve no votes.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
That's, that's a good sign.
Yes, it is. Number nine, administrator controller report, Jody will be off, out of the office all week. Number ten, correspondence, we have A through F.
I would like to address some correspondence, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, so we got a, an email from Ann and Rick Meeks. It says, we're writing to urge you to table any action regarding the Higgins Lake Level Control Structure pending the upcoming review of the circuit court of the current lake level order, CHLLO versus Ross Common County Board of Commissioners. And we also got some information from Mr. Meeks in the last meeting regarding the lake levels and some letters that were sent to him by Department of Natural Resources. And everybody's probably wondering what this is. This is a science experiment. If everybody remembers Back in the Future, we're going to have a little science experiment here regarding this letter. And I'm going to describe to everybody what this is. This is Higgins Lake at legal level. This is Home Lake at legal level. Higgins Lake is a little bit higher than Home Lake. It looks like it's a lot here, but it's really not. And here are some facts. Higgins Lake, the higher elevation, as I just mentioned. And Higgins Lake is about one half the surface area of Oatton Lake. And Oatton Lake has twice the surface area therefore of Higgins Lake. And one inch of water leaving Higgins that arrives at Holden equates to one half inch of water on Oatton Lake. Now, if the springs, the entering Holden Lake have the lake full and you take some water out of Higgins Lake and it goes down the Cut River to Holden Lake. and it goes down the Cut River to Houghton Lake. Uh-oh. What happened? It didn't happen. It didn't happen because the letter from the DNR official that Rick Meeks gave us says it doesn't happen. The lake level on Houghton, Higgins Lake has, leaving Higgins Lake has nothing to do with the water level on Houghton Lake. And all of these facts and figures that he gave us don't either, okay? In fact, the water did not have any water there because according to Rick Meeks, the laws of hydrodynamics do not exist in Roscommon County. That's my experiment. Thank you.
Thank you. Number eleven, Monthly Department Reports, A Animal Control Animal Shelter October twenty twenty-three stats. Number twelve, Visitors. Do we have any visitors? Unfinished New Business, Proposed Twenty Twenty Four Budget.
Were we to comment on that, or?
If you have one.
Okay. Can I comment on that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I think our proposed budget should reflect at least a fifteen percent fund balance, if not eighteen percent.
I'm sorry, what percent, Mr.?
At least fifteen percent, if not.
One-five?
Correct. If not eighteen percent.
And what is the proposed budget?
Under fifteen percent.
Okay, Darlene, did you have anything for unfinished new business?
Yes, um, kind of off-topic here, but, um, I'm a trustee on the Michigan Association Workers Compensation Fund, and we had a meeting last Wednesday down at Novi. This is where we get our workers' compensation from. And in one of the sessions that we were talking, they brought up First Amendment auditors. I had no idea what they were talking about. But the gentleman, A.J. Hale, he is a safety, he does safety training and he will come in free of charge if the county would like him to, to explain this, but in short, what they are, are it's a group of people that will come in and they will try to antagonize different people within, at the courts. They could come into our meeting and they tell you what not to do. And the best thing you can do if it does happen is ignore them. You can't touch them, you can't grab their phones, you can't do anything like that. And so he just said that if we wanted him to come up and kind of go through and explain because they're getting more prevalent and they are coming up towards northern Michigan.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Did we not have them out in front here earlier this year?
That I don't know.
I don't either.
I think we did.
Any other unfinished new business?
I'll just second, Mr. Chair.
Michelle, number fourteen.
Yeah, yeah, just, I, I, I wanna bring up the fact, something that came up in my trial the other day is that we've never voted on the committee assignments, but that really doesn't matter because there is no rule that says we have to vote on committee assignments. In fact, many assignments are assigned by the chair. Just to, I just wanna get that clear and on the record, the, the committee assignments have never been voted on. And I'm, I'm sorry, you were mistaken when you testified and said that they had been, but because they have not been.
Okay, thank you. Number fourteen, motions and resolutions, Michelle.
Move to approve the reappointment of Amy Schmidt to the Department of Health and Human Services Board for a three-year term beginning eleven-one-two thousand twenty-three to ten-thirty-one-two thousand twenty.
So move.
Okay.
Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Censor?
Yes.
Ostergren?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes. Motion number two, please.
Move to adopt resolution number two-zero-two-three-dash-eleven-dash-zero-two, Coast to Coast on my fifty-five recreational byway designation, Manistee, Wexford, Mesaki, Roscommon, Ogama, and Iasko Counties. Cities of Manistee, Cadillac, Lake City, Houghton Lake, Prudenville, West Branch, Tawa City, and East. Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, Resolution Number Two-zero-two-three-dash-eleven-dash-zero-two, Coast to Coast on my fifty-five recreational byway designation, Manistee, Wexford, Mesaki, Roscommon, Ogama, and Iasko Counties, Cities of Manistee, Cadillac, Lake City, Houghton Lake, Prudenville, West Branch, Tawa City, and East. Whereas the Michigan Department of Transportation, Highwayways Program pursuant to P.A. A four-forty-five of two thousand fourteen amendment is empowered to designate scenic, recreational, and historic highways in this, excuse me, historic highways in the state. And whereas the public highway known as M fifty-five extending from Manistee to Tawa exhibits exceptional recreational quality and passes through an area of significant regional importance. And whereas, a study has been undertaken by the Coast to Coast on my fifty-five Committee, which assesses the quality of and documents the character and features of the M fifty-five Highway Corridor. And whereas, it is intended that the study be forwarded to M dot to nominate Coast to Coast on my fifty-five as a pure Michigan byway. Therefore, be it resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners enthusiastically supports the nomination of M fifty-five as a pure Michigan byway and authorizes including this resolution with the nomination documents. And be it further resolved that the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners hereby requests and encourages the Michigan Department of Transportation to quickly designate M fifty-five as a pure Michigan byway.
Thank you, Michelle.
So move.
Second, discussion. Michelle, call roll, please.
Ostergren?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Russo?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, motion number seventeen.
Nope, I think we got sixteen.
Sixteen, wasn't? I wrote seventeen.
Yeah, sixteen and seventeen.
Okay, yeah, sixteen. Please, Michelle.
Move to adopt resolution number two-zero-two-three-dash-eleven-dash-zero-three, two thousand eleven, Public Act One-Fifty-Two, Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act Resolution for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Roscommon County Board of Commissioners, Resolution Number Two-zero-two-three-dash-eleven-dash-zero-three, Annual Exemption Option as set forth in two thousand eleven, Public Act One-Fifty-Two, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act Resolution. Whereas the State of Michigan enacted Public Act One-Fifty-Two of two thousand eleven, the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act gave immediate effect on September twenty-seventh, two thousand eleven. Whereas, P two sets forth various options that public employers may follow when providing healthcare benefits to their eligible employees. And whereas, the County Board of Commissioners recommends that Roscommon County, again, formally exercise its legal right to exempt itself from the Act for calendar year two thousand twenty-four. And whereas, Roscommon County has a long history of proactive budget practices that have resulted in budgets that are balanced and fiscally sound, as demonstrated by decades of actual performance. And whereas, medical costs from two thousand twelve through the present time reveal, and on average, the county has remained below the state-designated cap levels, thus meeting the spirit of the legislation. And whereas, the county of Roscommon has chosen to create an employee premium share program that is more suitable for the economic climate and culture of Roscommon County and its employees. Now, therefore, be it resolved that pursuant to the authority granted, a county under Section Eight of Public Act One-Fifty-Two of two thousand eleven, Roscommon County Board of Commissioners hereby exempts Roscommon County from the requirements of P eight-one-fifty-two for calendar year two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Michelle. Well, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. Clear call roll, please.
Censor?
Yes.
Yes.
Wolfson?
Russo?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Motion number seventeen, please, Michelle.
Move to authorize the Roscommon County Board of Commissioners to move forward to seek private donations to fund Chase Shupke as the delegated authority for the Higgins Lake Lake Level Control Structure, at least through the Eagle Permit Process.
Discussion.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to say something. I think this is gonna be a, a good thing for Higgins Lake, for the reasons that it's gonna show that the people on Higgins Lake can take care of themselves without a special assessment district, which is, of course, under appeal right now. So, I'm, I'm happy that this is, uh, this is coming up and, uh, and I urge my fellow commissioners to vote yes on this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clear call roll, please.
Russo?
Yes.
Censor?
Yes.
Ostergren?
Yes.
Wolfson?
Yeah.
Number sixteen, Committee Reports, Eric Yuster.
Oh, yes, I've got a couple of things. Higgins Lake, Houghton Lake, and Lake St. Helen report. Higgins Lake is currently a quarter of an inch below the maximum winter drawdown already, and it's only been a few days since it was supposed to even start. In fact, it was below the winter drawdown before the summer drawdown was even done. It's six-point-two-four inches below the summer level and it is currently out of compliance with the court order. Houghton Lake is five-point-zero-six inches above the maximum winter drawdown and it is in compliance with the court order. Lake St. Helen is five-point-five-two inches above the maximum winter drawdown and it is also in compliance with the court order. Attended a special meeting back on October thirty-one. It was called for the, uh, the Board of the Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Association and regarding an equal opportunity charge against the NLCMHA for a discrimination charged. And I took a lot of notes and I went over the, with the attorney up there, what I could talk about at this meeting, and so I underlined what I can't talk about. And then we left the session and voted to proceed with the attorney's advice. Okay, so I can't discuss this issue with anybody else outside our board. Thank you.
Thank you, Darlene.
Um, there was a substance use disorder meeting up in Gaylord yesterday morning. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend that meeting. However, looking through the board packet, motions that were on there dealt directly with Charlevoix in Grand Travers County. There was nothing there for Roscommon County. Um, and then Rex and I have talked and met regarding the lake level committee and the letter that was sent out to help fund the survey, and we talked about that prior. And we're also talking about getting the apportionments for Houghton Lake and Rex was gonna reach out on that.
Thank you. Rex?
Yeah, I attended a nominating and leadership development committee for Northern Lakes Community Mental Health cover for Eric on November first. I didn't know they had college courses for bureaucracy.
For what?
Bureaucracy. It just amazes me. And I don't see how we can move forward with services to people of Roscommon County with this outfit. I think in the near future, we need to look for a different avenue. We spent an hour talking about how many minutes we're gonna spend on the next meeting issues.
Rex, I don't think we can get out of it.
Nope. We can't.
Right now, what about, at what time, do we ever, are there any alternatives? I don't believe there are any alternatives, do you?
Unless we want self-funded.
I think, I think we need to pursue it, though.
What about pursuing having someone other than a commissioner attend? Someone that is deeply involved with the mental health situation as we had, have had in the past. I mean, is that something, I, I know we probably have to change the enabling agreement, I would suspect.
I think.
I know we discussed that.
I think that's gonna require an extensive amount of time by that person to try and make any headway. Just so we all know. I mean, when we, when we sit there and talk an hour about, are we gonna spend ten minutes talking about this the next meeting and twenty minutes on this? Instead of just, let's go do it and get it done?
I know one of the things that we discussed is breaking off as, and being the four or five counties being in charge. And because of the problems that we are having with the issues with Traverse City being dominant, because that's where all the money is. I know, I don't know, I think we, I think we need to start looking into that.
Now you're on the committee. Give us some feedback. Thank you. I had a agenda meeting.
By the way, thank you, Rex. I'm sorry. Thanks for attending that for me.
I had an agenda meeting, airport meeting was cancer, canceled until a later date. Number sixteen, public comment.
Good morning. I'm Julie Garton. I'm the District Director for MSU Extension, serving counties including Roscommon. I wanted to, uh, sort of pre-prepare you for an invitation I'm gonna send, but also to invite the public as well. Michigan State University Extension is in the process of doing a strategic directions process. And through that, we're gonna have sessions all across the state to gather input from the public. And we have a session upcoming. The closest one is December twelfth. And that's a Tuesday. It'll be in the evening at the Kirtland, Kirtland Community College Campus in Grayling. And so it'll be four-thirty to six-thirty. It's an opportunity for the public to share their, share information about what their priorities are for the work that we do to educate the public. It could be about a wide-ranging discussion of, of not only our content, but some of our processes that we're using to reach the public. And so I will be sending a formal invitation to all the commissioners, but just ask that anyone who might be interested can feel free to contact me and find out more about, about that opportunity. Staff are also invited, but the public session and the staff session will be separated, just so we can keep internal conversations internal and external partners focused on some different questions. But wanna make sure that all the commissioners know that they're welcome to attend. Secondly, there've been some discussions and situations that have come up. We have resources on a wide variety of subjects, but one thing that's happened recently and is timely because of the hunting season is there was an animal discovered to, a deer that was discovered to be suffering with chronic wasting disease in Ogama County. And deer don't necessarily know where the county boundaries are. And since you're an adjacent county, it seemed like a good opportunity to share that we're gonna be publicizing information in, that we've created in cooperation with the Michigan Department of Natural Resources about how people who are involved in hunting and harvesting deer at this time of year can make sure that they're doing all that they can to stop the spread of chronic wasting disease and also keeping themselves and their families safe through that. So we'll be sharing some social media messaging among those things, just to, to maintain, to think of this as a food safety project when, when they've, when they've been able to successfully take down an animal and to have clean tools, to wear rubber gloves, you know, to look for health indicators with animals that they might see when they're hunting. And so essentially, don't, uh, don't try to harvest a deer that may have signs of being diseased with chronic wasting disease. Also, to improve the herd, which we have an extensive herd in, in Michigan, to think about looking for antlerless animals because thinning out the doe population actually does increase the health of the overall population. And then to be cognizant of things about food safety when taking animals to processors. For example, if there's a concern that chronic wasting disease is in the area where you may have harvested a deer, that you make that known to the processor so they can separate that animal from other animals that they might be, that they might be processing. Also, to work with the DNR on, in terms of sampling, when, where they will be, to look for those opportunities to allow the DNR to continue to sample. to sample tissues from animals so that they can better monitor if the disease is spreading across the state. So that's something that has just come to light. And I'd be happy to try to answer questions. I will share with you that I am not a hunter, so even though I sound like I know what I'm talking about, that's not something I am an expert in, but I do work with really, really smart people who put these materials together. And then just, I was talking with a constituent here in Roscommon today and mentioned that Michigan State University Extension has a course called Introduction to Lakes, which is designed to help people who live in communities where there are lakes, lakes, which is all over the state. So I'll send that information to you. I'm sorry, ran out of time.
Do you take your deer to get a sample, to get a test?
DNR stations.
Okay.
It's one in Roscommon, Houghton Lake, Lake St. Helen.
Thank you.
Eight Grayling.
Trying to get the word out.
Any other public comment? Number 17, the German. So move.
Is our meeting at 11 now canceled until next Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay.
I, all in favor?
Aye.